Here we do the. Here, we do the.
Did it make the funnel? What?
What? Didn't make the funnel?
Didn't make the funnel? I don't know.
Okay, I don't know.
Um, every year the region has each county do an MOU. Um, every year the region has each county do an MOU. But it just explains that the uh region, what percentage of staff the region will pay? But it just explains that the uh region, what percentage of staff the region will pay? And then the process of the money coming to the county. And then the process of the money coming to the county. Um, the there one change is underlined, but I believe that was changed last year already. Um, the there one change is underlined, but I believe that was changed last year already. That if we don't reconciliation is after the fourth quarter. That if we don't reconciliation is after the fourth quarter. And then if we didn't spend all of it. And then if we didn't spend all of it. The The amount for the following fiscal years, third and fourth quarters will be reduced by the amount we didn't spend because that would be kept in our fund balance. amount for the following fiscal year's third and fourth quarters will be reduced by the amount we didn't spend because that would be kept in our fund balance. And so that's really the only change from last year is that language. And so that's really the only change from last year is that language.
And so it's not really losing any dollars, you know? And so it's not really losing any dollars, you know?
No, it's a break even thing that um comes from the region to the county. No, it's a break even thing that um comes from the region to the county. So I don't know how things will be handled, you know, if there's changes. So I don't know how things will be handled, you know, if there's changes. You know, things will have to be reconciled at the end. There's going to be a whole lot of things that'll have to be reconciled. So that's not addressed at this point because we don't know. You know, things will have to be reconciled at the end. There's going to be a whole lot of things that'll have to be reconciled. So that's not addressed at this point because we don't know. But um for right now, the money is coming. But um for right now, the money is coming. Comes in at the beginning of the quarter, not prior to the quarter after that first year. So. Comes in at the beginning of the quarter, not prior to the quarter after that first year. So. Other than that, no major changes. And it's got all of our staffing in there, the percentage of staff. Other than that, no major changes. And it's got all of our staffing in there, the percentage of staff.
I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five MOU for the Mount House region. I make a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty five MOU for the Mount House region.
Second. Second.
Yeah, the first and the second, all in favor? Yeah, the first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Aye. Motion carries.
There seemed to be a lot of discussion about this in the hallways down in. There seemed to be a lot of discussion about this in the hallways down in.
Was there? Was there? I wondered if there was anything new, a lot of confusion. I wondered if there was anything new, a lot of confusion. Of course. Of course. Yeah. Yeah.
Speculation. Speculation.
One with the red, that's the that's the original or? One with the red, that's the that's the original or?
That's the way they sent it, but I think we should accept the change before it's signed so that the red's not. That's the way they sent it, but I think we should accept the change before it's signed so that the red's not.
Okay, well, I'm just kind of conservative. Okay, well, I'm just kind of conservative. But But we should have John sign. we should have John sign.
Do you like, you don't want the pressed out? Do you like, you don't want the pressed out?
Well, that's would be my. Well, that's would be my.
Right, you know, so. Right, you know, so. So do you want me to um do a clean, like accept those changes and then send it back out? So do you want me to um do a clean, like accept those changes and then send it back out?
That would be great. That would be great.
Yeah, I can do that. I'll just run up a copy though. Yeah, I can do that. Or I'll just run up a copy though.
Okay. Okay.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you. Next up is approval minor plat for Ivan Miller. Next up is approval minor plat for Ivan Miller.
Okay, this was a Amish individual that resold back in uh August twenty eight, twenty twenty three. Okay, this was a Amish uh individual that resold back in uh August twenty eight, twenty twenty three. Three to zero voice supervisor vote. Three to zero voice supervisor vote. Fee we received, overlay, attorney, depending legal description. Fee we received, overlay, attorney, depending legal description. Lender consent, already consent, plan, survey, treasurer certificates, all in compliance. Lender consent, already consent, plan, survey, treasurer certificates, all in compliance. Um, no issues from the engineer, no issues from the auditor in regards to the legal description. Um, no issues from the engineer, no issues from the auditor in regards to the legal description. I've been on site, actually delivered this individual to the nine one one sign. I've been on site, actually delivered this individual to the nine one one sign. Um, and this is the one, if you remember back, had a twenty foot driveway. Um, and this was the one, if you remember back, had a twenty foot driveway. Um, there's two fences on each side of the driveway. That was one of the conditions that was placed on this rezoning because it's going back into. Um, there's two fences on each side of the driveway. That was one of the conditions that was placed on this rezoning because it's going back into Um, the field that you'll see on the next slide, but obviously it's south of hundred and thirtieth. um, the field that you'll see on the next slide, but obviously it's south of hundred and thirtieth. Bring up the next uh. So this proposed um plat of survey is how we take the agreed CSR levels and the proposed P and Z committee and myself. We'll bring up the next uh. So this uh proposed um plat of survey is how we take the agreed CSR levels and the proposed P and Z committee and myself. And it's hard to see, but you can see how the And it's hard to see, but you can see how the half of the soils change right here. So Brian Crawford and myself worked so that we got it on the CSRs. half of the soils change right here. So Brian Crawford and myself worked so that we got it on the CSRs. Level and the area that the P and Z commission and you had agreed to. So that gives you an idea on the proposed one. Level and the area that the P and Z commission and you had agreed to. So that gives you an idea on the proposed one. And then if you wanted to check to the next one, Amber. And then if you wanted to check to the next one, Amber. Yeah, final. Yeah, final. And obviously more description, the legal, et cetera, is all in compliance, name is parcel B. So. And obviously more description, the legal, et cetera, is all in compliance, name is parcel B. So.
What was the CSR, Chad? What was the CSR, Chad?
Uh, on this one, it was sixty seven. Uh, on this one, it was sixty seven.
Okay. Okay.
You have that, you have that too. You have that, you have that too. So basically, obviously working with the Amish community and all that dark color. So basically, obviously working with the Amish community and all that dark color. Um, they come in commonly for two or three days, sometimes two or three different visits. Um, they come in commonly for two or three days, sometimes two or three different visits. And uh they're proactive on trying to find a space that works for them. And uh they're proactive on trying to find a space that works for them. The unique portion of this is why we kept this to twenty with the recommended driveway width. So we weren't taking out a lot of uh production. The unique portion of this is why we kept this to twenty with the recommended driveway width. So we weren't taking out a lot of uh production. Um, in regards to pasture or any type of row crop farming and everything, if you go out there. Um, in regards to pasture or any type of row crop farming and everything, if you go out there To the east is all fenced and patched different cattle and horses. to the east is all fenced and patched different cattle and horses. There's a barn there already built and homestead there. And actually, they just closed on their USDA loan last week. There's a barn there already built and homestead there. And actually, they just closed on their USDA loan last week. But everything's in compliance. This is just the final portion to stamp it. They're able to record it and then it'll go into our accessory mapping. But everything's in compliance. This is just the final portion to stamp it. They're able to record it and then it'll go into our accessory mapping.
And so that was pasture land then? And so that was pasture land then?
Um, it was uh, if you go back. Um, it was uh, if you go back. So you can sort of tell uh where was row crop and where was pasture. So this this was planted to a pasture here. So you can sort of tell uh where was row crop and where was pasture. So this this was planted to a pasture here.
Okay. Okay.
This was row crop and this was mixed back and forth over the past few years, but this was pasture as well. This was row crop and this was mixed back and forth over the past few years, but this was pasture as well. And this was already seeded. That driveway comes up and then. And this was already seeded. That driveway comes up and then.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Like that. Like that.
This is the primary use purpose for this property and. This is the primary use purpose for this property and.
So A two, so he's uh raising some horses, some cattle. Um, he is marrying the uh So A two, so he's uh raising some horses, some cattle. Um, he is marrying the uh daughter in that family right there. So it's agricultural. daughter in that family right there. So it's agricultural.
Okay. Okay.
I'd make a motion that we approve the minor plat for Ivan Miller. I'd make a motion that we approve the minor plat for Ivan Miller.
First, I have a second? First, I have a second?
Second. Second.
You have a first and second. Okay, say aye. You have a first and a second. Okay, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries.
Thanks. Thanks.
Next up is to place on file the following maneuver management plans. Next up is to place on file the following maneuver management plans. Alan Wolfpool Outback Middlefield Township, section thirty five. Alan Wolfpool Outback Middlefield Township, section thirty five. Mark Zeaser Kono Township, section thirty. Wolfpool Site. Mark Zeiser Kono Township, section thirty. Wolfpool Site. Aitman Township, section thirty four. Aitman Township, section thirty four. Uh, first, do I have a second? Uh, first, do I have a second?
Second. Second.
I have first and a second. On favor, say aye. I have first and a second. On favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Right, next up is a quote for a hot water pump that came in from Brecky. Right, next up is a quote for a hot water pump that came in from Brecky. I can't remember the dollar amount of that. I can't remember the dollar amount of that.
Three thousand one hundred fifty three dollars. Three thousand one hundred fifty three dollars.
Is this different than the work we had done? Is this different than the work we had done?
Yeah, that's a, that was a heat exchanger. Yeah, that's a, that was a heat exchanger.
Okay. Okay.
This is part of the system uh that pumps the water back and forth, the air hammer system. This is part of the system uh that pumps the water back and forth, the air hammer system. That's got the coils in it for the north end. So That's got the coils in it for the north end. So the uh, I talked to Brecky, Jason about this and also to the technician. the uh, I talked to Brecky, Jason about this and also to the technician. There's no way to salvage the pump that's in there because it just There's no way to salvage the pump that's in there because it just worn so bad that there's, they tried to do a repair on it and because of the grooming, cutting on the shaft and everything, there's no way that a seal worn so bad that there's, they tried to do a repair on it and because of the grooming, cutting on the shaft and everything, there's no way that a seal will hold anymore. Uh, it will just continuously leak. will hold anymore. Uh, it will just continuously leak. So it just uh something that needs to be done. They did find a couple of these that are in stock. So it just uh something that needs to be done. They did find a couple of these that are in stock. Making so they can do their work right away. Um, this is used for heating, so. Making so they can do their work right away. Um, this is used for heating, so. Um, it's one of those things, another maintenance upkeep issue that uh Um, it's one of those things, another maintenance upkeep issue that uh is very old and they're down, they're just expectancy, life expectancy, so. is very old and they're down, they're just expectancy, life expectancy, so.
I make a motion, we approve the quote. I make a motion, we approve the quote.
The first and the second? The first and the second?
Second. Second.
On favor, say aye. On favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And carries. And carries. Julie and Ty, opioid, seven. Julie and Ty, opioid, seven. Budget. Budget. Good morning. Good morning. Please. Please.
Um, pulling in a lot of different uh people in the community from different types of entities. And uh we came up with the fiscal year twenty four and twenty five budget. Um, I just put them both on one page to make it easy for you. We don't have much time left of twenty four, but thought we could at least start a few things. Uh, the action plan item. We gave you the um strategic plan last time we were here. You approved this.
December, it looks like this.
Yeah. And so the action plan item relates directly back to the um strategic plan and the strategic plan relates directly to the guidance from the state. Um, and so we wanted to make it very clear that we're um spending the money according to the guidelines that were given to us from the field we always own it.
And then this also is our minute tool. So everything that we do is documented.
A lot of the things don't require funds from the opioid.
Where's the billboard going to be located?
Haven't determined that. The ones in the city limits are a little bit cheaper, the one out by Walmart and out by Wopsey Creamery and the school. Then the new ones that are out in the county, I think those were significantly more.
Expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So we'd have to see what's available, but I was in the county, obviously, but.
Yeah, and I don't know around besides the one new one in Winthrop and the one out by Raleigh Turnoff. I don't know. We need to do some more research to see if there's other county locations that we can put them besides just independents, so.
And then I think the plan would be to move it, you know, do it one time, one place and then move it once that lease term is up to try to hit different.
Would you say the one out by the high school might be a good visibility area to let you guys figure that one out?
And the information that we're looking at is, there's a lot out there, either um that uh pathways had a lot and there's on on some of the websites, there's a lot of options for us to pull information that's already been developed.
I wonder if there should, if there's some like infomercial things that you could, that we can put into our websites. Public health website and maybe some county.
Like on our Facebook or?
Like a video?
Yeah, like there, there was.
Oh, videos, okay.
Videos you can go out and find.
Um, there is like on Naloxone Iowa and different websites that we could link them to. Yeah.
And on the um trifold cards, resource cards, we will have um a QR code there that'll link to information for people and those will be distributed different places throughout the county. Uh, the medication drop boxes, just so you know, they all, I mean, the sheriff's department has been actively involved in this. They would all be where they're a secure area with cameras. Uh, and have been looking at. Boy, my concrete word, that's concrete, not concret. I don't know where that came from. Con, the maximum. It's supposed to be concrete. It was two fifty for the concrete, a hundred for labor. Clayton wanted us to make sure we set a max on that.
Her location.
Yeah. I can fix that. It's even spelled wrong. Man, when did I do that? I will fix that and send it to you. Um, so we have looked at a couple of different options for the drop boxes, either old um postal boxes, but then they actually thought they might prefer the ones that are actually made for for medication disposal.
Your concrete might be a little bit on the short side of it.
It it's just a little pad. So the sheriff had talked to um the city of Fairbank where they want to put it and he was hoping that after talking to the city guys that they would just add it on to a project so it wouldn't be a whole.
Because otherwise it's a short load, it's a.
Right.
Charge and.
Yeah.
You're already there.
That wouldn't be a whole thing. It would just be a, I don't, do you remember what they said?
I don't.
Three by three or something like that. It was, so he was hoping that if we could get this approved and move it forward, they could just add it on to.
Okay.
So use leftover that they had with their project.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did have a discussion on that at a meeting quite a bit. I will say that the committee that's been working on this, I've I've attended most of the meetings. Um, and a very diverse group here that deals with this kind of issue with opioids and stuff uh. And this committee has worked very hard on coming up with a plan, uh the best use of the dollars and stuff, so. The, there's been a lot of extensive discussion with them.
Um. What is a Detera drug disposal pouches?
Those are um med deactivation bags. We do have a few extension heads some sitting in their storage room, so we're working on distributing them. We've gotten them to the libraries. There's some in our office and then um Kimberly. Um, the law enforcement liaison has a couple other locations that have asked about them. Um, so it would just be purchasing some more. So really you just dump your medicine in and then you dump water in and it deactivates it and then you can throw in the garbage.
Oh, wow.
There's several different kinds. Uh, the Detera ones are the ones that we currently have. Um, so that's probably what we will go with. And there's different sizes that you can purchase depending on the amount of medications. So try to focus those in some locations that don't have a Dropbox. Um.
Or maybe people who have more trouble getting out to a Dropbox. Some pharmacies give them out when they give out certain medications. Um, others do not.
Either you want to touch basically the why the committee went ahead with a thousand dollars in the crisis transportation.
You want to talk about that? You want me to?
Go ahead.
So the medication assisted treatment that can only be done at pathways. Um, or there's a location, I believe, in Cedar Rapids as well. So they have to go there every day for that. And so we put this in our budget, not knowing if we have individuals in the community that have need um to get assistance to to travel there. So the thousand dollars, it may just sit there, um but at least we have a line item in case we have somebody that's struggling to get over there. And that might be that we um need to purchase gas for their car to get it over there. Or Julie has worked with a couple of the transport services that um would be willing to transport people back and forth. Medicare does pay for some transportation, but they pay, they drop you off, you might.
Medicaid.
Medicaid, sorry. You might get picked up four or five hours later and we can't let them sit there for a ten minute visit for four hours, so.
You don't.
Does our support letter. Support hours.
Yep, yep.
And one of our local providers is now um a Medicaid provider. And so they, one of them that I've worked with.
For.
Yeah, and so um maybe if people are having trouble, you know, it might be just as simple as hooking them up with a different transport service and that type of.
Yeah. Okay, so that's this year twenty four and then.
Yeah.
Twenty five.
So twenty five, again, the billboard or media campaign materials. The Too Good For Drug Program, that's a prevention program that Pathways will be doing in the school. So you can see above they, that was just for the curriculum to purchase. Um, in twenty four, twenty five, that will be um if we need additional curriculum and then the cost for staff, um Pathway staff will be doing that for second graders in the county. Um, and I believe she's already got that pretty much worked out that every school um is wanting her to come in. She's already doing other prevention um work through a different grant fund. Um, but they can't do it for second graders. So this would this would um allow them to do that for the second graders. Print more trifold resource cards, more of the drug deactivation, crisis transportation. And then the big purchase that we need to um think about for next year is the harm reduction vending machine. So we can put the Narcan and other harm reduction materials in there. The um, the reason it's so much, one, the vending machines are a lot. If you have temperature controlled vending machines, they're about thirteen thousand dollars. And then um to purchase your own Narcan. We cannot use the free Narcan from the state um to fill these vending machines. Um, because they have a training requirement and we can't guarantee that someone would be trained if they get the Narcan out of the vending machine. So um.
We'd have to purchase.
We would have to purchase that through these funds. So we will work with a pharmacist that sits on the advisory committee and.
And I don't think even if, because I know like when you go to Sam's Club, if you want to get their sample, you watch their video and then you get their sample. But I think you have to sign off that the person actually got the training. So I don't think even, unless they change the guidelines, even having, you know, they'd have to watch the video or it would have to play. I don't know if they make them that way, but I think the person still has to sign off, so we would have to.
And they want to be able to
ask questions.
Person there so they can answer questions. So we do have that free Narcan in our office. If anyone is looking for it, they can come in, they can watch a short video. Um, and the sheriff's office, we've been, I worked with Mike Bradford and the sheriff and Michelle Toma last week, and they are going to load those videos onto their tablets that they check out. And every person coming into the correction center will have to watch that video before they can use those tablets. So then they can get um free Narcan too when they leave. So everybody will be trained whether they want it or not. But it's a good thing just to it's an easy thing to know how to do and it's an important thing to know how to do because you never know when you'll be put in that situation, so.
And the trifold cards will be distributed um at the jail. We'll have them out other places um for distribution. Try to get them out any place that we can. Um, and they will have resources on substance use disorder treatment, on um opioids, Narcan. Not sure what all uh Kimberly's been working on those.
And Lynn County is just putting their first Narcan vending machine in, so.
And they.
Hopefully we'll get some lessons learned from them before we do ours, but.
I think we appreciate all the hard work your committee's done. This is, there's so many restrictions and guidelines that you have to follow that it's, it is kind of a tedious process, but you guys have done a great job.
Uh, and this was not gonna, this uh, what we got in front of us is not going to harm our because we got about seventy eight thousand dollars, but it's good to get this money started, putting it to use so we can do our prevention work and our bake.
And a lot of these are one time costs.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that, yeah, it still leaves a large amount to the budget.
Because I don't think that money is meant to sit there.
No, it's people, it's time to put it to use.
Yeah, well, and the nice thing is Pathways is doing a lot of this work with other grant funds and though those grant funds may be running out at some point in time and so we don't want to spend it all, you know, on big.
We can help some better.
Items yet. We want to kind of see where those are going. So they've been a great partner to.
This is not a short term thing. This is going to be going on for sixteen years.
Beyond nighttime.
So we just need to approve this then?
Yes, and then.
I'd make a motion to approve. Should plan item.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Just want to clarify then that I think what we talked about when we presented the strategic plan was that once you approve this, we don't have to come back with every project as long as we stick within our budget. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we will start. Let's, we can keep you updated.
Yep.
And you're done, so.
Thank you for. Thank you for the hard work, please. Bethany Jordan from Martin Gardner Architects regarding courtroom walls next.
Front and center. We don't make you swear on the Bible.
All right, well, great.
Definitely, I just wanted the, the board has some questions and all. The services that you had listed here, exactly what. All this pertain to what means and. All this will maybe lead us into being able to apply for a grant to get this work done and stuff.
Sure.
So kind of, you want to just kind of go through your purposes here? What all consists of what you'll be doing for us?
Sure, yeah. So it's my understanding that you're seeing some signs of water intrusion in the courtroom. And so what I will do with this and the main purpose is to do a building condition assessment. And really determine where water is getting in on your entire building envelope. I'm not just going to look. Right by the courtroom. If we see signs of water damage by the windows. Sometimes it's a straightforward where there's not caulking around the windows and it's a simple solution. Usually it's not, especially with old buildings like this. And so I will look, as long as you can provide me access to the roof, I will look at the roof, the building envelope. Anywhere where water is getting in. And then identify that in the building conditions report. And I did bring some examples too of other reports I've done that I can hand you if you want to. If you want to go through those, but then this is always kind of the first step, so. Whenever, especially whenever you apply for a grant or funds. They want to see some sort of due diligence on the county's part that you've investigated the issue, because what they don't want to do is pay for. Let's say window sealant and plaster repair. When that's not actually the cause of the problem and you end up having a leaky roof or waters coming in at the parapet and coming down and it undoes. That work, it just damages the plaster again. So. Generally, the state likes to have that report as backing of we've investigated the issues. This is the issue that we think is causing it or the issues and we want then this grant to cover these repairs for these. And so these are.
Thank you, a couple of those.
Wait, and I'll give you that one. Can give you these two.
Thank you.
Yeah. And some, like, there's another one I have where it's kind of a master stabilization and rehabilitation plan and that's more in depth than what. You really need here. But this is hopefully identifying. Any repair projects that you need and also give a prioritization within that or recommended. Sequence essentially for the repairs, usually starting with like the most severe where water is really getting in and then.
Probably the most important part, huh?
Yes, yeah, and it's really the first step. And truly tackling. The issue and getting it.
We, I don't know, the year it's been, since I've been here, we. Several years back, we had a tuck plane company come in, I did a bunch of tuck plane and stuff. We already had this deterioration going on.
Sure.
So I don't know if that's going to help resolve the issue and slow it down. And that will be identified in your report.
Yeah, yep, and it is plaster repair or plaster damage in particular is really tricky because. Historic plaster is really thick, it's over an inch thick and it can get wet and it can dry out and it can wet and drought. So oftentimes you won't see the damage until years after. The leak has started. It just takes that long to work its way through and make it's. Make it apparent, really. And then sometimes too, if you have a leak, you close it up, you find it right away. Let's say your maintenance guy's up on the roof. He finds something, he repairs it. Sometimes you'll even see damage after that repair, after the water has kind of worked his way through. So it's very tricky. Moisture issues in general are the hardest problem to solve on old buildings and they seem to have a lot of them, but. Usually we can figure it out.
And with us being a historical classified building here. Something we want to be very conscious about is like the windows and stuff on open net. We don't have to do nothing with the windows. It just. Involve around the windows and stuff, so.
Yeah, you, it would be probably unlikely that. Water is getting in through the window itself, especially if you guys have a storm window or an outer covering on it, which I can't recall. I know I was up there. A little bit ago, but usually it's not the windows that are causing the issue, but and I should have mentioned, so I am a historical architect with Martin Gardner Architecture. And so any, any recommendations that I make in my report will be consistent with the SOI standards. The treatment of historic. And I should also mention, so a couple of those you'll notice, say like tan report, a report of site visit, those were done. I am a, it's, it was the tan program and now it's called the field services program where I'm an advisor for the state historic preservation office. And they will have me go around and do assessments to certain buildings on their behalf. And so that's what some of those are when you see that tan report.
This is something, if we go ahead and hire you to do this. This is something that you will do, you'll put a report together.
Yeah, you'll get a report, yep. And so I'll come, I'll do. Kind of a lengthy visit, I'll get up in the, I'll get on the roof, I'll get. Round in the attic, I'll walk around the building, I'll walk around the inside. Ideally, I'll look everywhere. That you'll give me access, particularly if there's a maintenance person that can walk around and show me. Issues that they're seeing and then I'll go back. Work through stuff, create the report. And then I'll come back and share that with you after that's done.
On, I think he's brought up on time and in one of his comments and he looked through this and stuff like that. The hourly rate charge and everything like that, so. Everything that you have to do, do you think you have included in this total services charge of eight thousand dollars? Do you think we, was the possibility we could have some overrun?
No, you wouldn't have overrun. I mean, this is what I meant to, so the fee that's there is for doing these things. The little bit of project management time, the contract, site visit, reviewing all of my documentation, analyzing the causes. Doing the actual report and internal quality check and then the meeting with, with you. So there shouldn't be. Anything besides that. I did mention in there, it, under note three, that it, I do not have in there. An estimate of construction cost for those associated repairs. So if you. If that is something you want me to do, I can always add that in. My, that might be the only thing you decide to do that's above and beyond what's in the scope of this. Yes, the actual repairs that I, I identify as part of this report. And so that could be something where we can always tack that on at the end. If I present the report to you. And talk through things, then you're like, okay, well, let's get costs associated with that.
And then that's time where you have to work with the contractor.
For the preliminary opinion of probable cost, I've done enough of these where. I do those, I mean, we can never. I joke a little bit that we're better than weathermen with our cost estimates and they aren't predicting the weather, but. It's still dictated by the availability of the contractor. There's a lot of. There's a lot of unforeseen, so a good approach is to have to actually just get bids for that work. And then you're not paying for me to do a preliminary cost opinion when. You can just, if you know what the repairs are needed, you can have someone work on construction documents for it and get it out to bid and get the costs, so. That's always an option too.
Now, you've mentioned that your experience and stuff with historical buildings. Do you have any, is there any particular. Certification or anything for that particular thing? You work with historical issues?
Sure, for me or for. Like any certification that I have?
If we're, if we're looking at getting grant funding and stuff like that. If they look at saying that we had somebody like you doing this job or somebody that maybe didn't deal with historical.
Sure. I mean, the state can usually tell when they're given a report. Whether or not. The architect is well versed in historic preservation based on the recommendations that they make. So another architect that might come in would say, okay, well, these windows are really old and drafty, you should replace them. Whereas I would say, well, hold on, they can be repaired with a little bit of sealant and actually the issue is. X, not the windows themselves, so. But also most people with ship on me, I used to work there when I was going to Iowa State. I interned there for a couple of years, so very familiar with them and they do know my name, but. Usually they can tell when someone knows the SOI standards, so.
Is there any advanced charges on this?
No, you would be invoiced as the work is completed. There's no down payment. And we can do, as I mentioned in my email, we can do hourly not to exceed. So if I get here and it's. The issues are really straightforward and it only. Cost, you know, like two thirds of my time to do the report, you'll only get billed for that.
This is pretty much the entire building that you.
I am going to look at the entire building because it, it affects so many things. Like if the roof is leaking, it can affect so many things. Just based on how water travels, so.
Yeah, and we don't, what do you do about a situation up there where I, I think I took you in there in the jury deliberation ring? Where there was troubles with that wall, so some decision was made someplace along the line just to cover up the problem with paneling. Have that paneling in the, in the stripping that was done behind there to hold the paneling on it, is all releasing from the walls and stuff. So that will have been identified and, and.
Yeah, and it's a good point too where, I mean, I don't have x-ray vision, so my observations will be limited to what I can see. Through things. If there's any areas that you can like, let's say you want to have your maintenance guy pull off one of those panels. You know they're failing. It would be better if they could pull off one and I can actually look at it. Otherwise, I can still make recommendations of, well, I'm pretty confident that there's moisture behind here. My recommendation is to. Remove all the paneling, repair the plaster walls after. We deal with any issues that are causing the water to come in at the roof, at the parapet, at the flashing, yeah. And I would even, what I'll probably recommend is waiting a little bit too after you've fixed, if there are issues. At the parapet or, or whatever at the roof, waiting a little bit, so all that moisture kind of works its way through. Before you do any plaster repairs.
And you've had quite a bit of experience, you've worked with a lot of other.
Yep, I do a lot of work with Winnebago County and then we as a firm have worked, we've worked here before, prior to my time. We've worked for. Quite a few of the county courthouses in the eastern half of our state, so.
Well, I think it's important, we, we need to protect and preserve our courthouse building. I mean. This is something that's been a concern of mine almost from day one, when I seen the issue and problem of that. This is not going to get any better, it's going to continue to deteriorate, get worse. Sometime, somehow it's going to have to be addressed and funding provided for that. I think we're kind of in a position where we have leftover apartment. To help deal with this issue and problem to take care and maintain our courthouse building.
We do have to be careful because if you get a grant, it's a federal grant, you can't use those federal funds to match that federal grant.
Is there, on these historical building grants, something like that, is that state grants?
And so it depends on the grant source and most, there's a couple. State ones that might be a good candidate, one being. The HRDP grant, which is historic resources element program grant, it's not a huge one, it's, it's fifty thousand. And they've actually paused, normally they're due May first, but because of the governor's realignment with shipo. That grant is paused, so they're accepting them next year. But that's one example. And honestly, the funding that. IEDA has that they administer through the state, it, there's lots there. They all have specific requirements associated with them. So it would be a matter of if you're considering this grant. Let's look at the requirements of that in the context of if you want to use this funding to determine if it can be done. And in that case, it's usually a simple call to that grant program administrator with IEDA to say, can we do this? But there's a lot, I mean, there's cat grants, there's catalyst grants, some of which you're. Eligible for, some of which you're not as a, as a county government. So there's not. There's not a, a ton out there, but there are some.
Is there some that could be piggybacked?
Potentially. IEDA always says that they're, whenever they're talking about their grants, they like to stack up programs and stack up. Money and make it all work and I, so it's, it's really just dependent on. What specific grant you're going after and what they say can or cannot be used for the match. Or in conjunction with it.
Looks like you're doing some thinking now.
I am. I, actually, I would make a motion that we. Go ahead and accept Martin Gardner's proposal and proceed.
Second that motion.
I have a first and a second, all in favor?
And then I'll, if you, when you come in here to do your work and look around. I'll introduce you to our custodian, which he is not here today to introduce you and then. Cause we're in and out when I'm available, I, I can go around with you and stuff like that, but. With most of the scheduling, we have you work with our custodial staff to get you around where you need to.
Yep, that sounds good, yeah. And I'll coordinate with you well in advance to make sure that. I, I can't remember if we were up in your attic, but how you access your roof, make sure that's all.
It's not the most convenient access, but.
As long as they can get me up there with ladders and it's mostly safe, then I'll be okay. We should be okay.
Is that behind bars up there?
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
Right, so. Next up is meet with.
When, when do you think you're starting on this, Bethany?
Um, I mean, the weather seems to be getting good, so I should, should be able to start it at any point here. I just need to. Double check with our office workload and, but I would imagine it'll be soon.
And then get all my contact.
Yes, yeah, yep, sure do.
All right, so let's meet with John Brown, you know, the courthouse wall moisture.
Your reports, Clayton.
Thank you, Beth. Thanks for, you know, moving time up a little.
Oh yeah, oh no, that's fine.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Hi, yeah, this is.
Big guys doing?
Good, good to see you again.
Good, nice to see you too. Morning again. You guys were just discussing with her.
And it dovetails right into what we're talking.
Yeah, exactly. She was inspecting all the different forms that. Moisture can penetrate the envelope. There's about twelve different ways that moisture gets into a building. Also, don't know how to address the rising moisture issue that we addressed directly, so. You know, from the last meeting we did, you guys walked the, the foundation with us and. Inspected particularly in the mechanical room, how bad the moisture was coming through the foundation walls there. And then I think we also inspected both ends and found moisture in the walls, so. That's what we're here to discuss. Can handle it.
Think about it, your process. If we got an outside issue or have a continuously, something that's on the foundation, exterior of the foundation that's causing this problem. Your process doesn't address that, it just will dry, it will keep the dry waters. And the moisture out of the concrete.
Right, right, yeah. So if you guys have concrete issues where there's gaps between the slab load here and the foundation walls. that has to be addressed to handle that heavy rainwater that comes down those walls. Either gotta recock it, slope degrade away from the building so the water's running away, make sure spouts and gutter systems are working properly. So if you handle those, basically those three things, then you're gonna handle any type of rainwater moisture that's been coming in.
Right, so then that helps your process. So like what if addressing the outside issues should be number one and then addressing the wall issue should be number two. Because if we have your, if we have you trying to dry the walls, if you have, as you have water pouring into the basement, then you're kinda defeating your purpose.
Well, here's the thing, if you dry out the walls, then it may becomes real obvious where the moisture's coming in and you can actually pinpoint it.
What I'm wondering here beans, we went ahead with Bethany go ahead and do her assessment and stuff like that, it would be good for us to wait, see what comes out of that assessment and then move forward with doing something like that if it's a practical process. I would like to take care of the problem and issue aspire to, you know.
Okay.
What was your quote again? I'm sorry.
The quote?
Yeah, I had it till that one point.
Twenty nine fourth.
Dollars.
Yeah.
And that's the passive system.
Yes, ma'am.
And it will keep the walls, the down, the foundation from crumbling.
Yeah, it keeps the moisture out it uh in, as it releases the moisture out of the foundation, it draws the excess salts out of the out of the walls, the salts that remain typically uh when there's no more moisture increase or decreasing, the salts become inert and stop the erosion process. Now, the other thing, and I don't know if we discussed this with you guys or not, but the system is three hundred and sixty degrees spherical. You're guaranteeing against the moisture comes up underneath the building, but it actually dries out the whole building. And it's not just the walls. It handles excess moisture and wood, documents, paper.
If I remember, there was gonna be a requirement to have several units throughout the building.
Yes.
With this process.
That's right. Yep, I haven't uh have it slated for two of our medium sized units and one of our smaller units down the mechanical room.
Right.
And that give us enough coverage for the whole building.
That a good foundation building's nothing anyway.
That's right.
And the sooner you do it, the sooner the building's dry.
Right. John?
I think it's important, we've got a we've got a significant investment here that we've got to maintain for residents and to replace this courthouse would be astronomical, so. We've done a lot of upgrades already and we need to just preserve it now.
Yeah, we need to do some concentration on this, our main infrastructure cop.
I am. I would make a motion, we move forward.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded, fifth, okay.
Got a first and a second. All in favor?
Alright. At one time, what point do you think you wanna?
I could do it today if you want.
Why not?
I came prepared. I figured you guys wanted to move forward, so.
I uh, probably as our custodians not hearing stuff and and a, I've got a lot of mic time committed today.
Sure.
So.
I don't need him here, but if you'd like him here, that's fine.
We can get him access to the, cause you're probably gonna start in the mechanical room.
Right. That mechanical, we're looking at, you've seen what the issues down there were. They sandwiched all that communications junction boxes for everything for everything out there.
That's right.
And we're in hope that with the change we're doing in the phone system and stuff here, the courtroom and stuff, we can actually strip all that stuff off the wall and get rid of it.
Good. Fantastic. That allows a signal to get to those portions of the wall. Good. Fantastic. So I have um couple documents. I mean, you guys, there's two, two order forms there. Um if you sign both and then I'll sign them. You keep one, I keep one. Can do that. They can get it from me later, from the clerk, from the auditor rather. Again, I can start today if you'd like.
Yep, we can get him in there as soon as our meetings are over, left.
Fantastic. Great.
Alright.
He's gonna be real happy with the results.
Hmm, there's no sense of doing the rest of it if you don't do, if you don't have your foundation good.
Right. It's holding the whole building.
I know when we toured the building with you, it was quite eye opening, so with those moisture.
Actually, no, exactly. And this seeing what this all was doing to those walls. Alright.
There's nobody out there that does it quite what you do.
We're the only ones that do it.
So we figured that out. Searcher two.
Water getting into wall of the foundation and outside exterior part of it, stuff like that. And they do some other work and stuff. They wanted to come here and look at type of work that you do, but the other if they can identify problems and and what we can do maybe to address issues out exterior.
Right.
So I'm gonna meet with them tomorrow. We'll see what they propose, what they see to.
And if they discuss like doing a French drain system around it or
Right.
Cause a lot of the courthouses have been doing a combination of a French drain or drain tile type system around the outside. And then I go on all the way to the bottom of the foundation, but at least halfway down. And then it captures most of that rainwater, gets it away from the foundation. Between that and our system, they never ever have another water issue in their foundation. Uh but that's also very expensive doing that, building a this size footprint. That's a lot of excavating.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks again.
Alright, John. Yeah, so should I just start bringing my stuff in and bring it down into the mechanical room there?
Remember how to get there?
I do.
That's one of us.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
You guys maybe stop by later after the meeting?
You bet.
Brian?
Yep, I don't know where I'm gonna get it to take for it, but I guess I figured it out.
We've got two subjects on the agenda, one of which is the scanning of records.
Let's use a purchase rail cars first.
Okay, um what we're, rail cars can be difficult to get from year to year. And right now there's some available. The thoughts were go to a letting and tell them delivery after October first of twenty twenty four and prior to June first of twenty twenty five. And take the bids on them right now. The bridge's particular location is Taylor Avenue. Around the corner from that, we had Merly's Bridge. And why that one? Because it's about our worst bridge right now, on the little stuffs and the little stuff that we could handle. And we did do repairs to it about nineteen ninety five. The pier piling had rotted out, so we came in and drove piling and set caps for the pier. But the abutment piling's the same age.
This is in our five year plan?
Yes, it's in our budget. It's.
It's on the five year plan, so I can, so if people wanna go out and look at it after you talk about it, they can go.
It's actually in the accomplishment year list. It has been for a number of years.
This is in the plan though that our JS person just put out there, so people can see where.
Yep, yep. Taylor Avenue. It's just north of a hundred and fiftieth street and I picked up all the data, the bridge numbers and everything, I had it sitting on my desk. And I thought I put them in here until I looked a little bit ago. But yes, um.
Do you think you would have more than one company bid on these?
I have three contacts. So what I actually do, and again, we have to advertise it, so I'll have to post it on the DOT site too. To get my my bidding requirements. I'm restricted to a hundred and twenty thousand maximum I can spend. Well, if I spend sixty thousand in cars, I have a hard time getting everything under. So we will, we bid out the piling, we bid out the sheet piling, we bid out the rail cars. Then my labor costs don't become an issue.
What do you anticipate your rail cars going for this year?
I gave twenty two thousand fifty dollars last year and I'm expecting roughly the same cost. And I'm thinking that I'm, if I go shorter timeframes for them, I probably drive my costs up more than if I even give them more time for, for look for cars and see what it is and everything.
They bid on this. They they include the delivery cost?
Yes, yes, it is. It is delivered to the project location. Yep, then I have to unload them. Yeah, I'll typically bring the crane in for that. And coon rods come up for eleven, twelve hundred dollars.
Stage them in the ditch until you're ready.
For stage them in the ditch, something to do. And yeah, we could wait, we could wait a few months, we could wait till next fall and do it, but if you can get the cars right now, I'm probably especially if I tell them not to deliver till fall.
He was using them.
Well, it's like this, they're getting ready to run the roller in the county and they wanna know what bridge is they can't cross. And I visit with Alex, the motor graders cross every one of our bridges now. So we don't have any significant issues that way. The the ones they can't cross, I've got one on Finley, I don't think he crosses, but he might. And uh the people down in that area said, don't even think about replacing this bridge, leave it alone. Finley Avenue down south to Brandon.
But how much timeframe do you need, do you think, to let people do their bidding process? How many days out?
What I would suggest is setting the letting date of Monday, April thirtieth, that they have to have bids in here. And that sounds a long time away. It's about six weeks.
People, thirtieth would be good time.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
What time?
You tell me.
I imagine.
Nine fifteen.
Their meeting.
Yeah, let's do nine fifteen.
They won't show up. I highly doubt it. There's um there's three people I'll contact, Gateway Pipe and Supply out of Saint Louis, and that's a Matt. Can't think of Matt's last name right now, but um they don't really, this doesn't really fit with them, cause they wanna take the bid, buy the cars and deliver those cars. And we wanna inspect them. We've had problems where we didn't inspect the cars. Yeah, that was a bridge on two hundred and fiftieth street. So we put in the specs that they have to provide us the opportunity to inspect the cars prior to delivery. I don't wanna do that. There's uh Irma Corporation where we've historically gotten them. Then there is also a company out of Oklahoma City. It's Bob Street at the rail yard.
We have any other questions for Brian before we go ahead and approve his letting of the bridges? I said, do you have any other questions before we go ahead and make, can I get a motion on this?
I make a motion that we go ahead and proceed with the letting of the bids on rail cars, April thirtieth to nine fifty.
Alright.
Second.
A first and second, all in favor?
Alright.
Thank you.
Motion carried.
Next subject is hiring a summer helper to scan records.
So.
We're gonna scan our own.
This is what's being discussed. Um when we start talking, even just to do a few of them, they talk seventy thousand dollars and you've seen what it's costing to scan. There's a big scanner in Evan Sunat's office right now that.
Evan uses.
That Evan uses, that's right. And so the discussion is the potential of us hiring a summer helper, let him him take the records out of our office, come up here, scan the records, download it onto a computer and save them that way. We've got a lot of survey records that don't exist anyplace else. We've got a lot of plans that don't exist anyplace else. And it's a strong feeling from Alex, we need to do something about it. And I'm one of those that wants to kick the can down the road and have been kicking the can down the road many years.
So what are you proposing this, this individual, who are gonna be the candidates to do this scanning?
My thought typically would be a college student with some computer experience.
And with any positions, you have to put it out there for advertisement.
Yep.
Um this is gonna be a seasonal, not just summer help, it's seasonal. Um which means they can only be employed for two consecutive months or six months at the most.
Two consecutive periods, not months.
Are, yeah, two consecutive.
Quarters, quarters.
And the reason for that is because we need to follow the ACA, which if you employ them for longer than six months, you gotta pay insurance, health insurance. Um the other one is IFRS. If you go beyond six months, then you're paying in IFRS. So um to avoid that, it has to be less than six months.
Yeah, we'd have to have a job description too, but.
The other issue is this can't happen until the rearrangement of offices downstairs. Because Evan Scanner isn't gonna be able to move into my office until I move out of there.
Do we actually even need to move Evan Scanner?
That's the general consensus in visiting with them. And and you you saw some of the communications, cause we're trying, which comes first, the chicken or the egg type of affair even, and at what point do you bring it into the boardroom for discussion?
But well, what point do they move emergency management nine one one? So that could be, why couldn't we move the scanner into that room?
Because that's where IT's moving. Because IT only needs one room. They need to be, they can, they do a lot of stuff together. So they're moving into that office there.
Why can't we use one of their vacated?
Because Karen's moving into one and I'm moving into the other one.
Well, yours under no sense of urgency.
I'm not gonna continue to sit here in boardroom and work.
The bottom line is, yeah, when all this shuffling gets done, that's when it would work. But if you start looking realistically, you're looking at June for this anyway and yeah, like this.
Be until the end of May, first part of June.
Yeah.
But if you're looking at a college student, you're gonna have to you you know, when they go back to school, they're not gonna have time to do this.
No, no, and that's, and that that's why it kinda fits in with what we're trying to do Clayton, and yet I'm trying to spend fif- eighteen, twenty thousand versus seventy thousand up. No, but it'd be something, first of all, they, we can't move the scanner out there either.
No, because of the dirt.
That's not what I said. It's something Janet could work on intermittently.
Right, because the records are gonna have to come here anyway.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, they.
She scans them and then she could go back there and.
Yeah, but there's no way, then I've got, unless I'm in the office or Alex is in the office, so we've got nobody in the office either, if she's up here. Depends on if we got construction.
And I thought Tom Hun.
He will come up and take the phones if if necessary, but that means we basically have nobody in the front office center if we're doing that. And.
Any amount of hours is, what's she doing now for job duties? Does she have the hours available to do this?
I wouldn't think so that you'd have the, this, we're looking at we're looking at piles of information, yeah, collected over, well over a hundred years worth.
The next question is, if you've been thinking about this for a while, why didn't, did you include it on their twenty five budget? And why wasn't it included?
Well, let's go back to, was it truly included in the budget? We've got, we've got categories in there that would come into Dawn. If you start looking at um engineering administration. If you start looking at, um, engineering administration type expenses, yes, that could come under there.
They should have moved that cost to one of the.
Shifted around. And, and going back to your question too, I've been one that, hey, we've been surviving this way for, I've been here thirty one years, same thing, just keep going that way. But Alex is pushing saying we've, these plans are getting older and older and they're getting harder and harder to work with. They're getting more, the papers getting more brittle.
My next question is on the scanning. What, I mean, are you basically just scanning it into one file? How are you labeling this for down the road where Alex needs to?
Get access.
Something up.
We, we.
Understand the, the cost of scanning because I've held off doing mine also. But when a professional scans it, there's some organization. There's a way to go in and search on what we're looking for, or I shouldn't say we.
In those, those discussions have been held and kind of, well, um, Jason's comments back to me as well, I'm not going to have time to put this into the files. You guys will have to do, Alex or Janet will have to do that with his comment. Again, you get the same kind of issues, but what I'm truly envisioning is the summer helper that we would have them putting this into bridge files listed by township, because that's where we break them down or paving, grading files, grading files, paving files listed by township, because that's where we break them down now. Survey records.
Someone's going to train that individual on how to do that because that's not something I can do. That's not something I T would be available to do. And I don't know Evan would have time to do that. Um, probably your best bet there again goes back to either Janet or Alex.
Yeah. Yeah. And I'm not sure Janet would really have that knowledge either. So now it goes back to Alex, who's already got a big workload piled on him, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it's going to take training here because your chances of getting a s- a college student come in there knows what's how to handle this is.
Yeah.
It's not going to happen.
Yeah. And, and if you guys said, hey, just wait with this project another year, I don't have any heartburn with that either.
You know, if we're spending, you know, it could be up to higher than twenty thousand dollars.
That's realistically in that category.
To look at. Piecemeal on this, maybe do some of your older stuff first. Maybe split this over a two or three year period and have a professional hired to do this.
Well, when we start talking to the professionals, twenty thousand doesn't get them in the door.
I completely agree with that, but you got to look at it long term. I mean, this, this is a big process. My concern is pulling a college student in, not saying that they couldn't do it. So we get Sally in for two months. It takes a month and a half to train her. She gets three weeks of scanning done. Okay. So next year we pull somebody else in seasonal, we pull Bob in. And he want more training and, but his theory of putting it in, so everybody knows how it is, is completely different than Sally's.
Right.
So we have all these different systems.
That nobody can, and you, you can't find what you're looking for. You're going to open up a lot of, it's going to be a big search to find it. And the only, some, sometimes the only way to search stuff is knowing what it was named. And if you don't know that name, you'll never find it.
Sure. Yep.
Just curiosity. When you're doing research on things, normally how far back you have to go to look for something?
There's times they're going back to the original section ties. That's eighteen fifties.
And why is that?
Because that, there's a rock that was put in the section corner or quarter corner. And they're trying to find that particular location so they can put pins in to divide up the properties.
And that rock may have moved.
But it still becomes illegal. It's, and there's, hey, I can take you to a place here in Buchanan County where I've got three different surveyor pins that are eighteen feet apart. That one, I haven't run across that one in a number of years, but there's only one way to resolve it and that's you go to court.
Sometimes I'm like, you know, if it takes us fifteen hours, who knows? It all depends on the individuals, how long it's going to take to train them. So it's going to be at the county's expense basically to train this individual to do the job that we need it done.
Yep.
I, I'm really thinking that we need to start at someplace. Maybe if you can't, if your budget can't afford to do the total scanning that needs to be done in one setting, to spread it out over maybe a three year period or something, have a professional do it.
Clayton, that's, that's not a bad answer, but you're looking at close to a quarter million to get it all done. So if you look at, what I talked.
Was it down here for the recorder's office? Was that eighty five? Like eighty five, I think. And look at like records and stuff that she, I mean.
Death records and everything that she.
Well, okay, then hey, maybe, maybe I'm way off in numbers. I just listening to Alex, um, again, this is where the conversation occurred some this morning even. And that is, I said, where would you start? And he says, well, the first thing is those file drawers right there. And that's how big plan sets. And then getting into the survey records. And then when they get done with that, the plans that we store upstairs.
I would think it'd be a good idea.
There is numerous books down in the vault of Rhodes' information also.
I think it'd be a good idea to have, get a quote from a professional and maybe from the one that did the recorder's office.
Got one.
And we know what kind of, then we know how we're comparing to using part-time individual versus a.
Right. And plus they bring their own equipment in.
Yeah.
And that way it's where it's around their equipment.
Yeah, actually, we've, we've had some of those discussions and really what they want to do is they want to take, because they want to take my records back with them and work on them. And we couldn't live with that.
The one for Michelle came.
Yeah.
They did on site, but I mean, even if like that was kind of.
Do you remember his name by any chance? Because I have got quotes.
Cut.
Sir, thank you.
C O T T.
C O T T.
Did you find out?
I've got the courier.
I think it was though. There's a couple, there, there's like three different services out there that will do scanning.
Um, COT Services did Michelle's for the recorder's office. And it was eighty thousand four hundred and seventy five dollar.
Okay.
I do have the contacts for the other ones.
Yeah. And I've got Don Vusik's emails here and I was looking for what he had told. Thank, thank you.
Personally, on my end with the auditor stuff and the election things, if it ever gets to the point where I get this budgeted and we start doing this, I will never go with COT Systems. Only because of the way the gentleman treats people. Not going to happen. Did he did do an excellent job from Michelle? Absolutely. But I will not work with it.
Oh.
There has been, how do I want to put it? Because a lot of this came out when the ARF funds and people were, different offices across the state were getting quotes. And if he did not get the bid, no matter what the pricing was, there was threatened lawsuits. Because he didn't get the bid. I will not work with anybody that way.
That's not good.
Yeah, no, I, and I was.
Great for Michelle. So kudos, the job was done.
Right.
But I'm not stepping into that rabbit.
I was going to say it seemed like it went really seamless.
We didn't know kind of what went behind, what went down between the scenes.
There's a big lot of professional, because it's a delicate situation, working with these old papers and stuff where professional would be know how to handle them and deal with them more than a.
Instead of some kid that just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, and my.
I mean, not all kids are that way, but.
My basic answer is this year I probably pushing things too hard to try and bring in an outside company. Yeah, like I said, I have no, I have no heartburn with pushing the can, kicking the can down the road a little farther, but I know it's something we're going to have to address.
You can find out for the professionals.
That we have.
I can try to Dawn, but it goes back to where do I pull out of? And even right now, we're trying to cut back on what we're doing on, on bridges in particular to try and get things balanced and out right.
Was it COT that gave you a quote at one point, Brian?
Yes, it was, but I was looking in my phone and not finding it, even though I found three emails from them, but I never found any attachments.
There's COT, there's Arca Search, and there's U S Immunshading.
I'm quite certain it was COT that I was talking with.
I believe you are correct. I was looking to see if I had a copy of it, but I don't recall.
Yeah, my phone's not bringing the email up, but it goes back to you. Yeah, you, you try and get done what you can. I love your answer.
With the fact you hire a, uh,
College.
College student, they're not going to care how old that paper is.
Oh, there's one out of Cedar Rapids too, called Advantage Preservation. And back in September of twenty twenty one, we received a quote and I believe that had some of yours on it.
It, it, I'm certain it did too. And if I'm correct, actually, one of their employees lives in Buchanan County, one of the principals.
And this was only on items that I, that's down in the vault that belongs to Rhodes. And so there was ten books. And that was nine hundred dollars. That was Rhodes books. There were seven bridge books and that was six hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, there's one for two forty.
Those numbers aren't so bad.
No.
Twenty twenty one though.
Yeah, that was twenty twenty one. Actually, there's four different companies.
Even if it went up thirty percent still.
Yeah, yeah, but that doesn't.
People that.
But that's, that's just the little.
That's just a little job there compared to, yeah.
Doesn't include anything that he has out at the Rhodes Department.
Yeah. And the stuff in your vault don't get used that often, the ones out there too.
Close rooms and confessionals.
We can do that.
Decide what to do.
Then trying, yeah, I have no problems with that. Matter of fact, actually a relief to me. Uh, when somebody's telling you, we need to be doing something, you know, it's the truth. And yet you're trying to figure out ways to make it happen.
Thank you, Karen.
John, thanks, because I do have his emails, okay, so sorry. Okay, thank you. Then I, you want me to stick around for the comments? Maybe I should update you on Saturday's meeting even.
That would be good.
So the next up is, uh, the vending distributor, uh, Gloria LLC. What they do, it's, it's just the, the standalone things that don't plug in. He has, they have like a tall one that's like eight different sections or also have the three section. He actually recommended to do the three section here in the courthouse. It's a quarter vending machine. They bring it in, they take, they put all the stuff in it, they take care of the machine. We have to do nothing.
How often do they service it?
Um, how, like if it gets down there, then they'll come back in and do it. I'm not sure how often we would use it, but.
Travel too.
No.
So they just come in periodically and take a look at it?
And, and check and refill. And it's like, and like, say if we had Skittles in there and the Skittles weren't going over, they'll put a different candy in there that might go better. Because it doesn't do them any good to have something sitting there that's not moving.
Years ago, we had those in, actually, when did they take them out? They literally just disappeared and nobody knew about it. Because I don't know where they were from. It wasn't that long ago. So my only question, I mean, I don't care. I have no skin in the game. My question is, is it malfunctions? Do you know how many times my office staff has gotten chewed because they lost a quarter?
Put this number on him and they can call.
They'll still be in there. Yeah, that's, that's my only gig. I mean, I don't care. People use it, employees use it. It's a good deterrent for somebody waiting in the hallway with kids.
Right.
But if it malfunctions, they're always in there and we're supposed to pay them out a quarter because they lost their quarter.
And then keep record of that and we'll give him a call and he'll get over here. You're doing ten minutes away. Or Gloria will come over, one of the two.
All the officers are made on this thing go to this National Children's Cancer Society.
I think some of them do, yes.
I wonder if they support like, uh, when we have in Iowa City, the Children's Hospital down there. That'd be great if they did.
Is everybody in?
This is going to go next to our Pepsi machine.
Next to our Pepsi machine?
Where's that?
That is about ready to get excited to his, um, boss or his boss's boss. Because I keep getting in the runaround. So but these people I know, at least they bring their stuff in.
Where are we going to locate?
Um, actually, I was thinking like right out here, like maybe one here or maybe one right down there, because that's where you have a lot of traffic. People will sit out here, wait to go in for driver's licenses and stuff like that.
Have we had a lot of public demand for this?
Yes.
I get frequent calls from Amber. Thank you very much. And I get calls from the court office. Thank you very much. Yes. Remember asking me to get Pepsi and vending in here and that was months ago.
I, I guess there's nothing we can do it on a trust basis. And then if it doesn't work out, something's wrong. Get it out of here.
All right.
I'll make.
We're not signing any kind of a contract with them.
No, no.
I'll make a motion. We have Dawn proceed with this.
Yes. I like M and M peanuts.
I like plain M and M's.
Well, I like peanut butter and M and M's.
They don't have that on the list.
Yes, they do. Pieces.
Oh, Reese's Pieces.
Those will work.
Okay.
All right, I'll second.
All right, I got a first and a second all in favor?
All right.
I'm going to shoot one of these. Not really, but I do have a rubber band gun at home. I might bring it in.
Be careful, you're threatening me on, on the owl.
Oh, sign EMS phase one contracts. Did we get that in?
Daniel.
It's in the folder.
All right. Can I have a motion to sign that, please?
As the, my only question, I mean, I've read through it like three or four times.
Okay.
However, I am not an attorney. Are you guys comfortable with signing this? Has the county attorney reviewed it? I don't know. It's pretty simple. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay.
Has the attorney's office looked at seeing that?
That I don't know.
Has Daniel taken it to him?
No, sorry, John.
He said Daniel read, he said it's very straightforward.
It may not be in there because I didn't get, get it until Saturday morning. It is very.
We could. It'll take the county attorney look at it.
It'll take us two weeks to get that one done. Probably two, maybe three.
I think it's pretty straightforward to show it.
Finally, his plan will be delivered, uh, presented for review and approval.
Presented for review and approval.
That's pretty simplified, uh.
I'd make a motion, we go ahead and prove track and sign it.
On paper? Right, now we are to public comments.
Can I catch one other thing? I mistakenly stated the thirtieth was Monday, the twenty-ninth of April is Monday.
So you guys need to correct that motion.
That's on purchasing the rail cars. Make a motion, we make a correction to the motion that the rail car opening will happen on the thirtieth, it will be the twenty-ninth of April instead.
At nine fifteen.
At nine fifteen.
A second time.
Got a first and a second, all in favor? Motion carries.
My apologies on that, too.
Before we get into the public comment, I would like us to put on the. Either the next agenda or one coming up, discussion of what we're using the North End for. As far as office utilization and everything, because we have no, had no discussion on this. As a board at all, and we like to get thoughts on what we're doing. It sounds like we're just kinda shotguning this thing, and I. Would like to have that on an upcoming agenda.
You can have it on an upcoming agenda, but. I will tell Jason, he cannot move until after his maternity leave, then. Because we wanna be in control of office space.
Did I miss the UMS contracting?
I just got signed.
Because that brings me up to that action, what's the name of the company?
A Glory LLC, G L O R I LLC.
I tried Googling that, and that's why I missed the other one, and I couldn't, I couldn't really find anything. Were, were they out of Cedar Rapids, or?
No, they're at Jessup.
And a website, don't they?
Website.
Basement, that they got a bunch of candy they're trying to get rid of from.
No, actually, he goes and buys the candy, it's a professional vending company. They have some in, um, like the Walmarts and stuff like that. And, uh, the city of, like the city of Waterloo. The city of Waterloo.
Oh, calorie items in that?
Always only.
So it's on the news that that's an industry, private industry, that's actually growing with individuals doing it themselves. Rather, rather than corporations, it's people, their spare time can make money that way.
So the Be Well Committee is not endorsing this company?
Probably not. You know, sometimes you just have to have a peanut M and M for a little bit of stress relief that isn't mental and well.
I would. I would prefer alcoholic beverages.
We're still in public comments?
We are in public comments.
We met with, actually, we did a lot of work Wednesday morning with the legislature. It's, we got in to see the Senate President, which is Senator Amy. Want to say, let's say Claire. And basically, we had about a forty-five minute conversation with her. And particularly on the legislation that was passed last fall, which was seven, Senate File seven eighteen. Because in there, there are some critical flaws in there. Take a county like us who've been taxing at the minimum. We're required to maintain that seventy-five percent minimum, or we can't let any federal aid product. We can't let farm market projects, for sure, that's Iowa Code Section three oh nine ten. But they're also saying we can't let any federal aid projects either. We lose all, we'd lose any of the chance of letting those federal funds, and yet there's no real clause in there. That I'm aware of, that allows you to go beyond. Uh, the response back I got in visiting with one senator was, well, the board supervisors have ways of moving that monies around. And meet, and meeting the seventy-five percent, but. I'm not aware of any real ways of doing this. And so what Senator Sinclair directed us as a group to do was to come up with some possible solutions. And Mark Nero, Woodbury County Engineer, had submitted some possible solutions, and she just immediately shot him down, saying, well, that works for the big counties, but not the small ones. So on Friday's executive board meeting, we set up a committee consisting of. From the big counties, you have Mark Nero, you have Kathy Nicholas, and you have the Scott, A- Angie Kirsten from Scott County on that. From the small counties, you've got. You've got Brian Carter, you've got Todd Fulkerts. Bonkerts, and then you've also got another gentleman from out in the western part of the state. That are all gonna be on these committees to try and put together some things. Then we met Saturday with the, with legislators, and John was there, you guys were there. And what, um, and I brought that issue up. The Senate File seven eighteen, and, um, what I heard back from Senator Mike. Flemish was that he wants to be kept up to date on what's going on. And that committee is meeting this Thursday. Now, I don't have to be there, fortunately.
The, we, the last meeting the supervisors had, affiliate down there. Uh, nobody's, the general consensus was, we're supporting anything that had to be the House file bill, not the Senate bill.
The, that's probably on the committee bills, and that was another thing we had discussions on, too. And the, the House file bill does not eliminate the Surf Deck Committee, the Secondary Road Distribution Fund Committee. Like the House or the Senate bill does, so we could support that. So if the House filed, left the Surf Deck Committee alone, the Senate doesn't. The Senate were gonna, was gonna make the DOT Commission decide where the, how the counties divide up the funds. And right now, we've got a system that's working, it's not costing the state anything. They shouldn't be worrying about eliminating that committee.
Well, that, that's one of the things the government's been pushing, is to eliminate as many committees as you can. On the whole, across the state, stuff like that, but where this is not costing. Any money to have this committee felt to keep that in place.
Yeah, there have been several committees that I've surveyed that they are changing into advisory boards, and it not costing them any money. So that's just how it is. After listening to it for two days down in Des Moines, we just need to probably accept some of it and move forward.
Yeah, the secondary, the Surf Deck Committee is one that really shouldn't go away, though, because there's some, if you do. What you're doing is the DOT Commission will get to decide how the counties divide up the funds. And we've got assistance considered fair right now. There's been efforts in the past to shift this more to population-based. And away from, away from the area and traffic volumes.
Did that actually make it through? That didn't. When I see K W W L, it didn't sound like that one made it through the funnel.
E is to where, yeah, they both, both have past versions, they haven't reconciled.
But I think if they didn't reconcile, I don't think it passes through the funnel, does it?
Yeah, I think they can still move forward on this. Yeah, I can get you the House and send names on this if you want, I've got them out in the pickup.
I would also look up and see if it had passed through. It seemed like a very short list on K W W L.
That's actually being discussed?
That's passed through, yeah.
Well, then there's some other things, like they were discussing, uh, they were, it sounded like Dallas still alive, didn't it?
My mind is a blur. I, I've never heard, I've never heard so many words said in so little. We're listening to you, and we're going through the committee on that. Nothing about how they really, how they were gonna vote.
What really got me is that I didn't make it to the Saturday, but the one they had prior to that. It was brought up and said that there, we, why are we discussing these bills because it hasn't been brought to the floor for. I can't believe there. Al on that at all, because now's the time before it comes to floor debate, so you hear from us. What our feelings and thoughts are on this before it comes to the floor for your vote.
And a lot of those, too, by the time, personally from the newspaper. You know, my, my dinosaur media, by the time it hits the, uh, the paper, it's changed. You know, they go on these committees and all of a sudden, it's like, it's not what they said at a meeting, or it's not what was originally proposed by the governor. Uh, there were just a lot of. I was disappointed, but glad they're out there.
Yeah, well, then they got into lengthy discussion, too, on the speed cameras.
Yeah, and, and things like that, where they had their passions, but they had no passion for the ADA bill, you know? And, and so it was just, it was just interesting. They had their things.
Did the speed camera go through?
No, it's still, still being discussed, I think.
Because.
Clymish was really against it.
I, I kind of liked the speed cameras. I've noticed it made me slow down, and there's nothing wrong with me slowing down.
He was guessing from the standpoint of, of these companies coming in, uh, or the, uh, government entity, just for, uh, money. And I, and I said, well, you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna screw around with the, uh, the backfill. Cities are trying to look for other revenue streams, what do you expect? But it's, it's more the, that was the whole reason independence put them in, is the safety issue.
Well, and what Flemish was talking was that if they can justify. And here, if they can justify the speed cameras for safety, then they're fine. But they would actually have to fill out a form and justify it to the DOT. Because right now, there's a city that wants to put up speed cameras on Interstate eighty.
That's a money grab there.
That's, yeah.
It was a, you know, well, interstate highway, not a local government road. They wanted to. And, and that's what the, the, the city looked at the company, like.
Benson Gasco.
And they want to get on Highway twenty, it's like. It's part of that company that's looking.
Cause I agree, I'd, I'd rather see signs that have that flash, because even going into Arlington or out by the school, when you see that. That really catches my eye, or Bear Bank from the south end.
That's a city on camera. We had one, and I, I thought it was still running, the battery's gone bad in it. It's over ten years old, they're not supporting the battery, we haven't come up with a real answer.
Isn't there another battery you could just buy and put in there?
That's what, there should be.
I bet you even went to Batteries Plus or something, they'll find you the battery.
They went to Batteries Plus, John, and I'll, I'll show you the email, but here's. All right, so if, if you can't get a battery for a period, then you're not gonna hurt it by trying to rewire in. And so I was gonna visit with Don, because Don was in some of these conversations, too. Why can't we take a dewalt battery, a twenty volt battery, tie into the ten volt side? Cause there's a way of doing that, and it's supposed to be nine point eight, but maybe that's close enough that the speed cameras would still.
I was gonna say, there's gotta be a way to do it, I. I don't buy that kind of hooey. That's, that's a thing to try and sell you a ten thousand dollar speed camera, or.
But he did go to Batteries Plus, too.
You should hire an electrical engineer for the summer.
That can scan and multitask.
There we go.
I'll, I'll get to that.
I saw the email, but, uh.
Well, and like I said, my thoughts were, all right, if it's just. If it's just gonna be junk anyway, then you're not gonna hurt it by trying to wire in something else.
I bet you there's a lot of ways you could retrofit that. All right, moving on, anything else?
Other than the complaints we've had on Benson Avenue, and I thought after this meeting, I might just drive up there and take a look at it, and anybody wants to.
Benson Shady Grove? Why don't you take a truck with a trailer? Or a big equipment?
Oh, well, no, the one we're referring to is a rock. And, and mud. But in, in your other comment, I know how to fix that, just. There's no way I have the monies, yeah, grind them, and they become nice and smooth, but.
Can we do sections at a time?
How would you start developing your priorities? No, 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 what I'm saying is that my worst one by far is by the quarry, and then out by the airport. And I don't have the monies to do those, and then I've got an issue right now where I got an asphalt plant in town, so I should shift my priorities around. On my patching and such, and try and do something while I got a plant here, which is another subject, but. I agree with you completely, I just, I don't have near enough money to be addressing all these problems, and if you tried to go by worst first. Benson Shady Grove would be down the list a long ways.
I looked at those two. Okay, and I, to me, there's no issue there, it just. Something we standard go through every road in the county, the same procedure is done, pulling the shoulders. And we don't have enough, we've only got two graders that have this special attachment on it and stuff, so, and. I didn't see no safety hazard up there that's any different than what we go through every spring.
No, and the problem is gonna continue and get worse, because the heavier the trucks are, the more those edges beat up, too. The base beats down, the base soils are too soft, and that. The compaction in the traffic areas just keeps pushing the other up, too. And their other comment in there is just pay the road, and these complaints will go away. Indicate, is indicative of what their true goal was.
I can't speak for anybody's true goal is, but, however, moving on.
And we all, both had a chance to hear Senator Dan Zombach. Unlike Dexter's Rand Fisher, who's a real state official, talked about his experiences living near wind turbines. They're literally sold out, his wife came and sleeps. He invited anyone to park at the beginning of his drive and listen to them. When the effect on property values was brought up, he said he didn't intend to sell anyway. But what happens when the Zombachs do intend to sell, because someday they will? Most people can honestly say that their largest investment is in their property and home. Some intend to leave it to their children as an inheritance, others are counting on the sale monies, getting them through their later years, either in an apartment, assisted living, or nursing home. But what if, like several people in Wisconsin, no one will buy it because of the turbines? And if someone does consider it, likely it won't be anywhere near the price they counted on. What happens then? Nursing homes were expensive, will the cost fall on the county, the state? What happens? This is a real concern for people living near new wind turbines. The people who have signed contracts appear to think that they are the only ones with property rights. But the rest of the community has rights also. Her rights will affect everyone, one way or another. And that's why the P N Z rightly calls as a community issue. When the new WEX ordinances gets to this board, I urge you to back the P N Z. And vote to pass what they have researched and taken so much time and consideration to draft. There's an incredible amount of knowledge in that group of people, please don't dismiss them.
Done? No comments? Okay, um, I don't want to be counting, just revised their, um, solar ordinances last week, last Tuesday.
And wind, I think wind was in that, too.
So the basic points in here, it came as a result, a lot of people complained, there's already a hundred and twenty turbines in the county. And, uh, in talking to the planning and, and development man, um, he was talking about they want to protect the small towns. So here's what, what they've done, and this is passed, they're requiring commercial turbines to be at least a half mile away from dwelling. Limit the height of the turbines to four hundred and twelve feet. And keep turbines at least three miles from towns, parks, and the Council of Love's airport. I've got a copy, if you'd like that, um, this was all on K T I V, Channel Three, Omaha. Had a, had a big article on this, and, and, uh, they're really happy that the supervisors supported what, what. Had a, had a big article on this and, and, uh, they're really happy that the supervisors supported what, what the recommendations were made, but this came out of. This came from the complaints from the citizens that, you know, the shadow flicker, the headaches, uh, you know, those type of things. And, and as Matt Wyatt told me, he said, you know, because Council Bluffs is so big. That there's not as many small towns. This is basically a more of an urban, 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 God, my words are terrible. I mean, celebrating this, but anyway. You know, because it's just more, uh, urban than rural, that they really felt like they had to protect the small towns and communities. And if you would like me to send this to you, um, I will, I'd be willing to do it. Just let me know.
Um, I, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say that's fine. It, it was, and the supervisors approved it last week, you said?
Yes.
It's on there, it's on there. If you go to Potawatomi County, it's on their, I think their landing page even. Somebody else had told me about it, so I looked at it. She just seen an article pass through to me and it was taken, it was from. Portugal? It was from a different country anyway. And apparently, um, they were having a bunch of. Horses born with. Like in general, like the, like their hooves, they stand on the tippy toes of their hooves, like their tendons are. So they brought in another colt and he started doing the same thing. And they think it's the vibrations from the turbines that are causing some of that. I don't, I haven't had a chance to.
Oh, it's turbine toll.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to really look into it and research off. And I'm not sure what's happening, but.
It was space horses.
Yeah, well, and it said, like they looked at the seismic graphic, whatever. I think it's the. Thing that measures the quicks or whatever, or measures vibrations in the ground. They're thinking this is because of the ground vibrations.
What I, what I can't understand is why. Has there been any movement from the Iowa Public Health or anything on any of this? Because, I mean, if there's. Problems with animals, why isn't it with humans? I mean, you would think the public health. Have something to look at and something to say about this.
Well, according to cardiologist Ben Johnson, who came out with a report in, in, uh. Madison County, you know, he was a cardiologist for twenty years and he dealt with people for twenty years with heart problems as a result of this. And in his statement, I've read that before, one of the presentations I could think of. But there's no federal entity that's even studied it. There's no federal entity that's ever said that turbines are safe. And they've stayed away from it. Because of the politics and, and the money. So, so there really is some good research.
I think they could put a grant out there for doing some kind of a study. I mean, they, they provided grant money to study how fast ketchup comes out of a bottle, I mean.
But where's the money and, 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 uh, who's, who's in charge? For, while we're doing our country.
Brown County, Wisconsin had the turbine declared health hazard. It's the whole, are you stretching stuff, Brown County?
Yeah, was that two thousand fourteen? Shut down.
I was curious, uh, have the board been continuing to get the, uh, mobile emails?
Oh, yeah.
Too many though.
That's as many as.
It slowed down. What's that?
Here's another thing, just, just look outside of that turbine or that water tower turbine. Water tower is either a hundred and twenty or a hundred and forty feet tall, right? And if we increase that by four to four and a half percent. We've got five hundred and eighty-two feet, which is what they're proposing in the county. So take a look at that, just to get a visual of, of what we're dealing with.
Right.
There's, there's, there's multiple needs for that water tower out there. I mean, a buzzer's got its place to roost.
It does. Something swirling around and, and, well, that was the other thing with, with Potawatomi County, they were worried about the blades. Falling off, the blades starting on fires as well as the health issues. He's just, there's more and more, more and more turbines you have. I think, you know, it always amazes me, people say, well, you know, with the eagles. Wow, if you put those up, you know, cars kill birds. Well, so let's, let's kill more. Let's put more stuff up that's gonna kill them. You know, and, and again, go back to. I think I mentioned it last week, when, when the, the lights weren't flickering correctly and there's been a plane accident in San Luis Obispo. There was that one by Aberdeen, South Dakota, and, you know, I, I think each, each plane accident killed three or four people. So.
And the water tower at least does supply water to all the residents and, and the courthouse.
You have a gentleman that's been sitting here quietly. I don't know if he needs any.
I'm here to charge you straight. Well, you're.
Yeah, you know where Benson Shady Grove, uh, Pioneer Cemetery is? Are they right near you or where? But, uh, not real familiar.
Two years ago, I brought this to your attention. I would like to be buried in there. I, my joint, my ground adjoins it. And I can't seem to get anybody to listen to give me an answer. And then they told me in September, or maybe it was October, I got cancer, so I ain't gonna live forever, so you gotta make it to city.
So, and this is where you.
Yeah, kind of a, it's right on Benson Shady Grove.
Right on the road. It's a quarter mile, well, look up my address, two eight four one Benson Shady Grove. It's right next, my driveway comes right to it.
Two one eight.
Two eight. Two eight four one. Joey Youngblood.
Yeah, Joe. So what township is that?
Jefferson.
Yeah, they were, we were presented something by Al Vanderhart, I believe.
Yeah, Bill Reedy is, have you been in a discussion with Bill Reedy?
I have tried to call Bill for two years and he will not pick up the damn phone. Go away, you know.
Come to Brandon, the old rower he stays.
He's driving down the road and I'll get out of my truck. He has a driver, I don't mind. And he used to live a mile away from me. Maybe a mile from me. I get a lot of mail, but he just, I don't know.
And he's definitely a pioneer.
Yeah, it's Pioneer Cemetery, because Bill was one of the guys that, I used to pasture, is what happened originally. And Bill had come out and asked me and I said, I said, that's a good idea, the fence is all, okay? So, and he said the county was gonna maintain the fence, so that's gonna, so I got cows around there and I maintained the fence. But before it was this, uh, fenced off, I mean, so I figured just part of it.
Yeah. Did they, did they put the whole fence in or did you have, was that a fence shared cost?
They put the fence in, well, it's only, it ain't very, ain't a lot of fence.
Right, you split it up.
I'm not worried about the fence. All I wanna know is if I can be buried there or not.
Would you be the only family member or is your?
Nope. I'd probably be the only one buried there. I don't know. But I'd like to see my land stay in the family. You know, and you, we all ride by the cemeteries. How many people stop? My kids or grandkids, every time they drive out the driveway, that's where grandpa lives. Well, thank you.
So. Chair, would you wanna?
We already have sent something on this, remember, up to Sean?
Yeah.
And.
We've been dealing with this, but I haven't heard word back.
I sent it to you on the sixth of February.
I brought it up here early on.
John's decision.
Yeah, he just says, oh, why do we want to be? Why do you want adopted guidelines to be involved in written permission for internment privileges? Proving the hiring of a contractor for opening and closing grave sites or have the right to add any other reasonable condition. That should all be left up on the, on the township. Should do, like, we shouldn't be involved in, is what he's saying. He said the township should just, should do it.
Got the. Guidelines here. Do you want me to print those off for you?
Is there still a guideline on whether you can be buried on your own property? You know, at one time there used to be ones where you could have, you could bury one person on your own property.
I think it was a county ordinance, but don't quote me.
That's not, I didn't know it was.
I think there is.
Yeah, we had southeast of course, we had, they wanted to. Bury family members out there and that was rejected by the board. I wasn't on the board at that time. That was free me. I was sitting here and heard about it and that was rejected.
Because of the zoning.
Yeah, right.
I just want an answer. If not, I'll make arrangements someplace else.
I think there's a way for it to be done, Joe.
I'm printing it off for you right now.
But I think that we were, they came to us to sign something. I don't see any hardship with signing it, but. Our, our attorney has some questions.
Well, the county owns that paper. I think there's seven grave sites there. I'm going by the impressions in the ground. And there is a few markers that Bill put up. Don't know if there's seven markers.
There is, they're just markers or.
Well, they're actually stone.
They're after stones.
And a couple of years ago, we found a stone down by the creek, so I told Bill and he put it up someplace there. How it got there, who knows? Get all my crap for you. My wife finds flowers a lot, she has for a question, yes. Whoever hires the job, they're mowing the grass, both grass down and flowering. So she goes and mows.
I understand.
They still grow grass and flowers. But now she makes me bid this job. If I don't get it, I don't have to go home.
Are you seeing what the?
I said, that's bonus. I said, how do I know? I'm gonna get it. So last year we got it.
That's, and then here's Sean sent some other stuff back. Chapter nine in Iowa Code. And we put this on the next, on the agenda for next Monday.
Good idea.
So we can really discuss it and dig into it.
I may not be able to make that meetings.
Yeah, well, most, good idea. Um, I think we need to move forward for it and make a final decision, make a final call on.
I don't think there's really too much of a call we make, except we just need to approve what, uh. And even if we need to prove what they put in front of us, we think it can happen. But.
I don't, I just, since I was there, I thought, why not? And there's just, I'm gonna do that.
It's a good, looks like a good place to be.
I'm gonna be there sometime.
That's right. And if you can pick one close to your house, that's even better.
Year ago, I thought it'd be a while back. It's been a long time yet.
That's not.
That's too bad.
For you.
Is what it is. And change it. I'm trying.
We're only guaranteed so many days, right?
Yep, the, uh. Well, we just keep doing tests, testing, doing what they tell you.
It's a long, long road.
Can't sleep, laying down.
Really long road.
Yep, I haven't been to bed for. Probably seven, eight months. I don't know.
Yeah.
If I do, it's about maybe an hour.
Same.
I just.
Good. Get to that point for a while too.
Well, I got a chair that. That's halfway comfortable. Okay.
You have anything else?
We're gonna resolve for you. Okay, that's all I wanna know. If, don't go my way, don't go my way. I mean, that's what it is.
Alright.
I can probably wait to pin you.
Right.
Then I could put a, a block of cement right up on my side of the fence.
You have his contact information.
That's what I was gonna get. What's your telephone number?
My telephone, uh, is, uh, three one nine eight two seven one six eight six. There's a recorder on there.
Alright.
Or you can buy my cell phone is, uh, three one nine two six nine six nine zero zero.
Alright. And so if you're not here next Monday, we'll, we'll give you a call.
Yeah, okay. Sound good.
Hey.
They got, they got everything on hold, but I, I know better. Every day I get up, I can do it.
That's no fun. No.
So nothing else, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn.
At first?
Second.
On favor?
Alright. I wanna thank you guys.
Thank you.